Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Towndyne Board of Health Regular Meeting at the Old Town Hall, Level 11 Somerset Avenue. Today is Monday, October 25th, 2021. This is a public meeting being recorded for cable broadcast and internet posting on www.dyne-mass.gov and YouTube. This is also a remote participation Zoom meeting. Zoom meeting number 834-3538-7493. Zoom meeting passcode 852-156. Zoom dial-in number 1929-205-6099. Everybody's trying to get in on Zoom right now. Having some difficulty getting in there, so be patient if you're trying to get in. I'll call a meeting to order at 6:05, I think. And if everyone stand, pledge allegiance to the class.
My pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order business is to review, discuss, and act regarding a recommendation for a public health nurse. Did you see this?
Yes.
I drafted this up. You read that already?
Yep.
Okay. I'll read it for the record. This is authored by myself. I was part of the interview committee. Subject recommendations of Town of Dyne Public Health Nurse. The following individuals met on Thursday, October 14th, 2021, to conduct interviews of three applicants for the vacant public health nurse position in the town of Dyne. Those present for the interview, Town Administrator Michael Mullen, Chairman Board of Health Thomas Pires, former town nurse and present middle school nurse Denise Wilkins, and Health Agent Todd Pillen. The interviews began at 3:00 PM with each candidate given 30 to 45 minutes to respond to questions and ask questions of the interviewers. At the end of the interviews, an unanimous consensus was given that a recommendation be sent to the three-member Board of Health and the three-member Board of Selectmen for consideration of Nicole Mello for the vacant Town of Dyne Public Health Nurse position. So, did you have any discussion, any questions? Okay. I think the first motion was to accept a recommendation of this committee. So moved. Okay, I'll step down and second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're not on that yet, so we don't have to roll call, I guess. The second motion would be that we recommend Nicole Mello to the Board of Selectmen as the new Town of Dyne Public Health Nurse.
So moved.
Kevin's trying to Zoom in.
Okay, motion's made. I'll step down in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Myself, Tom Pires. Okay. Takes care of item number one.
Mr. Chairman, just while we're waiting for Kevin to...
Yeah, that would be a good idea.
Let's move to C.
Did you get in okay?
No. No? Because what it asks on here on the menu, I'm trying to look for it now.
Sorry, were you making a motion?
Yeah, he did on both of them.
The IT guy is...
It was a motion to accept a recommendation of the interview committee and send a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. We're not gonna get on, are we? I think we can do C.
Yeah, let's do C.
Review, discuss. We're gonna take number 3C out of order. Is there a motion to do so? So moved. I'll step down in a second. Motion's made and seconded to take item number 3C out of order. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? That's an aye for myself also. I carries.
Mr. Chairman, along this, the lines of this, I was up talking with the transfer station tenant, Mr. Ryan, and asked him about things for the item 3B as well. But he made a request. I guess he's had a number of people that have had large amounts of pink bags doing peanut things like that, and it would just be easier. He said they've had requests if they could just bring them to the transfer station instead of just having to put them out on the curb, you know, or they forget or whatever. They don't have to wait the week. So if we could have simple recycling, also do like a pickup, could be Tuesdays when they're out and about at the transfer station, and we can just set an area aside for them.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
If anyone wants to leave the pink bags. But that was a good idea.
Oh, it is, yeah.
So, Mr. Ryan, you made that comment, so I said I'd bring it back to the board.
Oh, that makes a lot of sense.
We just have to reach out to them, we could probably set that up.
Yeah. You know, as part of the route or whatever they do on, say, Tuesdays? I mean, my trash day, I'm on Tremont, is Tuesday morning, mine's a holiday, so I don't see why. And usually it's a little bit later. I mean, I leave for work at 7:30 or whatever, and it's, you know, if we pull one out, it's still there. So, transfer station opens at nine, right? So, if they could just...
Saturdays is late now.
Yeah, but they don't do pickups.
Right, but for pickups, I mean, that's in their general area for the route as it is, because that's the trash route. So, I think it should work out pretty good for them to do a pickup. And then we can just have Mr. Ryan set an area aside for the pink bags.
Okay. I think that's a great idea. They get, for them and us, actually more convenient for the people.
And if he doesn't have... Does he have rolls of pink bags up there to be able to give out?
He does.
Okay. I didn't ask him, so I just thought of that. If people are dropping them off, is that where they can get some more from him right there?
Okay.
Yep.
Yes. Can you hear us?
I can hear you very clearly.
Very clear.
Nicole, are you there? Can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay, Kevin, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay, good. Nicole, I wanted to let you know we were having trouble with Zoom, that we just accepted your nomination from the interview committee as our new Town Public Health Nurse. And we also voted to send a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen for your consideration, so to bring you up to speed. Any questions?
No, thank you very much.
Okay, what's with the contract now? Did, I know the contract's up, and we can extend it for three years or monthly.
Right, we can continue to run month-to-month, or we can do a three-year extension.
Yeah, I think the town administrator thought of month-to-month, but, you know, they're gonna stop paying us again according to what they said. So I think it's working well, it seems.
Yeah, we're still averaging about 3,000 pounds a month.
So...
There's no cost to the town, there's no, you know...
Motion?
Motion focused on the contract?
For three years?
Three years.
Okay. Motion's been made, I'll extend the contract for three years of simple recycling. I will step down and...
Oh, Kevin's still here.
Oh, Kevin, you're here, can you second that?
Second that.
Okay. Motion's made by Mr. Tanis, seconded by Mr. Bernado, to extend the contract with simple recycling for the curbside textile recycling program for three years. Any further discussion?
Just that, we see what we can do about having the drop-off of the transfer station.
Do a motion for that if you want, if you think it's appropriate.
I don't think it'll be a problem, just let them know and work it out on their details.
I'm sure they wouldn't mind at all, so... Kevin, did you get what we were doing?
I caught the end of what you guys talked, when I came in.
So just extending the simple recycling for the curbside textiles, just extending their contract. Again, you know, there's no cost to the town, and there's thought that we may actually be getting paid again, because originally we were getting a very small amount per ton. But also, when I was up at the transfer station talking with our transfer station tenant, he had asked if there would be any way that they could do a pickup at the transfer station, so people, if they have, you know, large amounts or whatnot of the pink bags, that they could just drop them off at the transfer stations that I have to wait for their trash pickup day. So, the transfer sta... It would be, you know, the Tuesdays I would propose for them to pick it up at the transfer station, which follows in their area for the trash route for that day anyway. So, just check with them to make sure it's okay, and then we'll just work it out with Mr. Ryan's for an area up there that people can leave their pink bags.
It's actually a good idea. I'm just thinking about an area where if the bags aren't sealed up, the product will get wet, the textile will get wet.
Yeah, just check with Mr. Ryan's and see what he thinks. But he had mentioned that to me, and I just said I would bring it to the board. I thought it was a good idea, and I think the consensus from all of us here has said it's a good idea as well.
Excellent idea. Nicole, are you still with us? I should have mentioned that if the Board of Selectmen, and I'm sure they will, accept a recommendation and appoint you as the town nurse on Wednesday evening, just give the officer a call on Thursday, and we'll get you going on whatever training. I think we'll talk about it with the board here, but I think Maven would be the first step, and then you can do the other training after that to get you started on contact tracing. Okay?
Yes, that sounds great, I will do that.
Okay, give us a call on Thursday, then.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Tom, if I could just jump in, because I showed up a little late. Nicole, I guess, congratulations, and welcome aboard.
Thank you very much, Kevin.
Okay. Kevin, do you want to take item B? Capital outlay?
Tom, I think we still have a motion on the floor, we didn't vote.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Oh, Kevin, Mr. Bernado?
I'm on, yeah?
Aye, Mr. Tanis?
Aye.
Mr. Pires is an aye. Okay. Okay, item 3B, to review, discuss, and act, Board of Health Capital Outlay Request. Kevin, you had mentioned a couple of things, so why don't you take this one?
The only thing I noticed is, when I went to the transfer station as well, I spoke to Tim. At the transfer station, I see all the tires that we have on the ground, and I was hoping that we could find an old container, put those tires in there, and purchase a new container if we can't get something from DEP without grants. That's the only thing I had, really.
Yeah, I was gonna propose, along with, as we had discussed the last meeting, definitely some new type of attendance building or shack, whatever you want to call it. But probably two new containers for up there. You know, they're obviously gonna last decades, potentially, of taking care of. I think it's a good opportunity to give a little attention up there. I mean, it's pretty heavily used, and trying to patch together some of the old containers that have fallen apart, you're not gonna get a very long use out of them. So, I was gonna propose two new containers, and we can certainly repurpose one of the better, older ones, you know, once it goes, if it goes through for the tires. I think that's a good idea.
Cost of a container's about 5,000, thereabouts, in that area.
It's like 4,000 and change from a year ago, so...
The building's another story. Kevin, I think you mentioned about using, creating a new attendance building and using the old one as a swap shed. I think that's way too small, in my opinion, to become a swap shed.
Okay.
Sound good.
Believe it or not, would you say that building cost even with our guys to build it, 7,000?
I think it would be between 8 and 10,000 dollars.
That little shack up there was that much?
The shed they were building next door by Bristol Fleming, right now the materials are at 6,200 dollars, and it's not complete. And you would need electric in this swap shed, because we need to have lighting.
I'm sorry, I didn't expect to talk, I didn't expect to talk tonight.
So we need to...
So, I think 8 to 10,000 is more like what the capital cost would be.
Well, what size are we talking?
That's a 12 by 16, which I think is a good-sized shed. I'm not familiar with the items that would be in a swap shed. Certainly, if there's large items, then 12 by 16 is too small, but if there's smaller items, then I think a 12 by 16 is more than adequate in size.
So that shed that the tenant's in now is 12 by 16?
No.
What is that, 6 by 8?
We're talking about pricing. The one next door is 12 by 16.
Okay.
The one that the attendant's in now is lucky to be 6 by 8.
I know.
It's small.
But it's completely inadequate.
Yeah.
Well, I think maybe we should get a new shed for him and a plus the swap shed.
Or you just do a slightly larger attendance shed, and then that way the swap area's monitored better.
Yeah, I would suggest doing that, making a building big enough for the two of those needs, and then you have one building.
Yep.
So something like a 10 by 20, maybe?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, are you talking about an addition on the shed we have now?
No, move that old one altogether. It's dilapid, it's small, it's, I mean...
That would become refuse.
A complete new, okay.
Like, life on the old one's probably another five years?
If that, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean...
So what do you think, in your best estimation, a, like a 10 by 20 would, or 16 by 20, 12 by 20?
What does the attendant need? They need... I don't, I honestly don't know what they do in there. They process paperwork, they handle payments, right? So, I would say if you want a good number in today's dollars with the cost of materials, 16, 18,000 for the whole thing.
Okay.
I'd probably say like an 8 by 10 area would be nice for the attendant. I know the size that's there now, and essentially double it. That way you can actually have a legit counter that someone can sit and make out a check, and they can get you your vehicle sticker and things like that without having to hold a checkbook on your lap and stand in right, and especially with COVID, you know, you're sitting right in front of the attendant, and, you know, it's just a... I'm sure 10 years ago, 15 years ago, it was probably adequate, but not in today's time. So, if you were double it, say, bump it up to like 8 by 10, and then it's still, if you were to do it 10 by 20, 10 by 18, something like that, it gives you that same amount of space for a swap area. You know, and you can limit it to smaller type incidentals, you know, you're not gonna drop a snowball over there or something for someone to pick up. But, smaller things that you wouldn't, you know, books or things like that, you know?
Yep.
I think that'd be adequate. And that way, through the swap area, it's monitored by the attendant a little better, and it's not just a, you're not just gonna get rubbish thrown in there.
Right.
Now, that's due the 18th, I believe. Is that correct? Yeah.
But, I mean, that way you're running electric just to one building, you don't have two buildings to maintain.
Right.
Things like that, so...
Right. The attendance portion, I presume we would insulate, where the swap or storage area would not have to be insulated. But that means the wall between the two has to be insulated, so, yeah. Money doesn't go far today.
20,000?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Mr. Bernado, your thoughts?
Yeah, that actually sounds good. When it comes to the swap shed, I wouldn't make it too big, because obviously it becomes flooded real fast, so this is like stuff like Christmas decorations or little knickknacks and stuff. The bigger items can stay outside, and if somebody actually wanted to pick up an old snowball or whatever it was, they can do that. I wouldn't make it too big.
Yeah, I think like a space like 8 by 8, 8 by 10 would be more inadequate, and put some shelving in there along the walls. I think that'd be adequate.
So what are we talking about here?
So Kevin...
Bottom line.
I'm thinking two new containers, and given the pricing off the top of my head from last year, they were about 42, 4300 apiece, I think, somewhere in that range. But certainly cost of materials, and, you know, they're not ordered for a year or two, whatever it case may be. I'd say up to $10,000 for two new containers for the transfer station.
Yeah, I'm thinking...
Make it 11.
Or 12.
12,000?
With the way the prices, I wanna say they were at like 46 when we got them in June, and everything's just going up, so I would hate to not have quite enough funds available.
Kevin, how about 12, 12,000 for the two new containers, and then 20,000, up to 20,000 for the new attendance facility and attendance building and swap shed.
That's motion, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Second, I'll second that.
All right. That motion's made and seconded.
And this is just to send the recommendations to the...
Correct. To send recommendations to the Capital Outlay Committee for two new containers for a cost of up to 12,000, and a new combination shed, which will house the attendant and a swap shed for up to 20,000. Okay. Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Mr. Tanis?
Aye.
Mr. Bernado?
Aye.
Mr. Pires is also an aye.
If we, excuse me, just leave them separate? I don't want to all lump together, Mr. Diddy, because then if, I just want to make sure that it's separate, because, I mean, I see the need for the building way more important than the containers.
Any public input?
Well, I had asked for the point-of-service thing for the transfer station tenant, too.
Okay.
Well, you said you wanted to keep them separate anyway, so... I was away on vacation last week, so I have not been able to find out what a price on them is, but I think you had said something like 13 or something somewhere else, so...
Yeah, I mean, 2017, 2000, yeah, 2017, they were running about 11, so of course everything goes on.
And I understand this is like a...
2017?
Yeah.
It's like a placeholder-type thing, that they're just trying to have an idea of what you're trying to do, but I think that would be important, especially if we're gonna try and modernize the transfer station a little bit with a nice building. It would be nice to...
You could incorporate, you know, if you wind up getting that as well as the building, you can incorporate it onto one, so that way it's outfitted properly to accommodate that kiosk, if you will. Kevin, it would be the, as, do you remember we discussed at the last meeting, the kiosk to be able to...
About four years ago, yeah.
Basically, like pay for your trip items, things like that. Make it a little easier, so you can do like credit card payments and like that.
And we can track better here how many mattresses we have, how many propane tanks, et cetera, so...
So, I'd say up to 13,000 dollars.
In theory, what DEP grants that we get could also be used for that, so even if we got the 13, we could maybe use DEP grants to supplement if we needed more, so...
Looks like you have a thought, Commissioner.
I do. So, I heard Agent Pillen say that this is a placeholder. This is not a placeholder. The capital request needs to go in using the application that was given to you, and then there's a rubric that's used to place you on the list of capital expenditures based on importance, funding sources, et cetera, et cetera. Does it create efficiency, things like that? So, pay attention to how you fill it out, because it's gonna have a bearing on where it falls. So, some of these things can be done right away, some of them can go on the back burner. So it's important to fill it out properly.
Like the shed, if that's usable life is less than five years, to me, that's way more important than...
Right.
Containers or the kiosk, no.
Right. So, so just, and I would definitely keep them separate.
Yeah, I think the kiosk is probably a great item to get, because better record-keeping and a lot of paperwork eliminated, accuracy, there's several processes, so... All right, you want to make a motion, too?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for the transfer station kiosk for 13,000 dollars to be added to the recommendation list.
Did you hear the motion, Kevin?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded to put on a capital outlay request, a transfer station kiosk for expenditure for up to 13,000. Do we think that's enough?
I have no idea. Like, so I didn't have any time to call anybody.
Okay.
Yeah, it might be, and then like Todd said, you can always use some of the grant funds if it's not.
Correct, yeah. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll vote. Mr. Bernado?
Aye.
Mr. Tanis?
Aye.
Mr. Pires is also an aye. Okay.
Jim, I know it's not what you're... Do you think there's any chance that the shed could be put through ARPA funds for reimbursement?
It's possible. Yeah.
Just because that's an infrastructure upgrade.
So, when that capital request goes in, there's gonna be a core financial team that looks over what the funding source is, and if ARPA is a funding source potentially, because it's something that's coming in the next couple of years, then that will be applied, and then obviously it may move it up to something we could do fairly quickly.
The shed also gives back to the community, which is part of what the ARPA funds are about, so...
Infrastructure improvement and everything else.
Yep, so the timing's good for all of us.
Oh, yeah.
And again, if you incorporate the swap shed into it, that's another point you can add on to the grant funds, so a little extra money for future years on grant money coming back to the town.
All right. Okay, no other items? Any public input from anyone?
The seminar thing I wanted to go to, it's on November 17th.
November 17th, Mass Environmental Health Association's 2021 Fall Seminar on Water, Food, and Housing: Essential Lessons for the Field. You actually get some pretty good amounts of CEUs with it. It's all day, it's 8:30 to 4:00 in Taunton.
Your fee?
Yeah, it's 95 dollars.
I don't need CEUs, but it's still worthy.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, the MHA one-day sessions are usually very informative and usually well put together.
We belong to MHA, right? So 75. Actually, I might want to go to this, too. I think I do, depending, so...
You're a member, too, aren't you?
Excuse me?
Aren't you a member, too?
MHA, no, I don't believe so. I thought the board was, it cost me 95. This is on November 17th. So, I think with the motion to, hey, you, you guys belong to this, or...
I do, yeah.
Want to go, you go?
I go through regular work.
Yeah, regular work, right. Kevin, are you interested in this, or you be working?
Be working, I don't think I'm gonna go.
Okay. So, how about a total of 5, 10, 8, 170 dollars for myself and Todd Pillen to attend? It's on water, food, and housing essential, oh, that's Lessons for the Field. Yeah, it's basically about housing, so...
I'll make the motion for 170 dollars for the two attendants.
Second?
Okay.
Okay. Motion made and seconded for two people to attend the conference in Taunton for a total of 170 dollars. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Mr. Tanis?
Aye.
Mr. Bernado?
Aye.
Mr. Pires is also an aye. Anything else?
Kevin, we have another plan that came in today, if you want to stop in to grab it, or if you want me to drop it by your house, just let me know.
Yeah, I sent browser text a little while ago. I can only come by Thursday to pick it up.
All right, do you want me to drop it at your house, or you just want to wait till Thursday to come get it?
I was gonna come by Thursday anyways, I could pick it up then, right?
Okay, that's fine. It just came in today.
All right, thank you.
No, thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
There are second?
All right, second.
Motion's made and seconded to adjourn. Mr. Tanis?
Aye.
Mr. Bernado?
Aye.
Mr. Pires is also an aye. Good evening, everyone.